No, it's warm. Can you turn down, turn down?
We don't need heat.
I know. It's usually too cold.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is our summertime schedule. We'll be right away. Yeah, would you?
All right, I'm on.
Thank you. Chill it, make it nice and cool.
Good.
All right.
All right, I'd like to call the July fifteenth, 2019, meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education to order. First up is to approve the minutes from the June twenty-fourth meeting. If I have a motion. Katrina, second. Tiana, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Next is to review and approve the agenda for tonight. Can I have a motion? Sherry, second. Penny, all those in favor? Thanks. Next is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of fifteen minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to be heard? Okay, thanks. Next is reports and recognition. And first up is to introduce the new special education administrators. Dr. Letzey.
I'll be very glad to begin. You'll notice a new face at the table, sitting there next to Darlene and Joanne. It is my great pleasure tonight to formally introduce to the board our new Director of Pupil and Family Services, Mr. Bill Tesper. We would have introduced Bill earlier, but he's been too busy at the high school as our special education administrator there. So now that summer's come and he's formally assumed his role, it's a great joy to have him here with us tonight and at future board meetings. There's been a great deal of debate over where Bill would sit at the board meetings. Since Darlene and Jill have been sitting together for quite a while. So after several negotiations, Bill's agreed that he would be sitting between Joanne and Dar, right in Gary's vacated seat. So, there we go. Bill earned his bachelor's in education from the University of Vermont, his MS in Communications Disorders from Southern Connecticut State, and his Educational Leadership Certification from Sacred Heart University. Bill is quite simply an outstanding educational leader, and I'm very proud to have him joining our district's team as the newest member of our cabinet. He's been working here at New Canaan High School since nineteen ninety-five in the Special Ed Department. And in two thousand sixteen, he was promoted to become the Special Education Building Administrator here at the high school. I remember Bill when I became principal of New Canaan High School back in two thousand eleven. He was one of the first people that I noted, since he was always eager to get involved with just about everything going on, including in curricular initiatives. He was actively invested in co-teaching in our science department. He was always willing and eager to share his knowledge, his expertise, his experience wherever he could, especially to the benefit of kids. As our high school's special education administrator, Bill established strong relationships with parents and faculty alike. And he always focuses on developing and nurturing those strong relationships on behalf of children. Bill understands, appreciates, and values the high standards our community has for its children, and is wholeheartedly committed to providing appropriate educational experiences for every one of our students, regardless of their need. As the twenty members of our interview committee can attest, Bill distinguished himself throughout the process, and he has, as he has throughout his career, as a thoughtful, committed, caring, and effective educational professional. And I'm wholeheartedly confident he will be equally, if not more, successful in the future. So tonight, it is my pleasure to formally introduce Bill Tesper to the board as our new Director of Pupil and Family Services. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Brian. Honored and excited to take on this new role. As Brian said, I've been here for almost twenty-five years in the district, and I look forward to taking that experience and then going forward with the great work that Darlene has done. You know, over the past three years, I've had the opportunity to be, opportunity to be mentored by one of the best special education directors in the state of Connecticut. She leaves me with some very big shoes to fill. I will do my best, and fortunately, she's right upstairs, so if I ever need to, I can run right up. And joining me in this, we have three new administrators in the district as well. At the elementary level, we have Robert Rousseau, who joins us from the Newtown School System, where he was a coordinator of special ed at Newtown Middle School, and also worked as a school psychologist there. His background in school psychology and extensive experience will suit him well as he leads the district in special education at the elementary level. He also has a very strong background in SRBI, which will help all students as well. So that's Bob Rousseau. Vanessa?
Bill, you can't use an acronym and not tell us what it means.
Oh, sorry. Scientifically researched-based instruction, or RTI. The world, as you know, is full of acronyms everywhere. Yeah, absolutely. Vanessa Dizners will be the Special Education Administrator at Saks Middle School. She joins us from the Easton Public Schools, where she was a coordinator of special education from kindergarten through eighth grade. Her professional experience makes her ideally qualified for her leadership role at Saks, where she'll be responsible again for the oversight and design of the special education programming there. So Vanessa. And then taking over my former role as special ed administrator at the high school is Dr. Tammy Hartman. She joins us from the Richfield Public Schools, where she was the coordinator of Psychological Services. And over her career, she has gained extensive experience across all age groups from pre-K to twelve. And she also brings a wealth of knowledge around reading, which will be a nice compliment to the, to the staff here at the high school. Her passion and dedication to students becomes immediately evident. The first conversation you have with her, she's lights up about education and helping kids. So, welcome, Tammy, as well.
Thank you all. Welcome, and thanks for joining us. Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you.
And to their credit, they've all started working already. As administrators, July one starts our year, and they're already here working in ESY and other projects and programs, so welcome and keep it up.
Okay, next up is our World Language Update with Mr. Dmiko.
It is summertime, and you're welcome to go. But not you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you for having me and allowing me an opportunity to update you on the World Language Goals and our progress towards them. Jill's smiling at me, so I'm just gonna tell you, my entire family decided to come with me tonight. So, we're gonna take Christmas pictures after that, so.
So now you have to introduce them.
Okay, this is Isabel, and she's going to be a Clemson senior. This is Morgan, and she's gonna be a senior in high school. This is Mark, and he's gonna be a fifth grader at Saks, and my husband, Mark Dmiko, who's a principal in grad. So.
So they're taking you out to dinner after.
Right. Meanwhile, they're like, we came in two cars, 'cause we're all gonna. So, anyway, again, thank you for having me and allowing me an opportunity to update you on our board goals. When I was preparing for this board presentation, I found a report that was written in nineteen seventy-nine for the President of the United States. And the President's Commission on Foreign Language and International Studies declares that "a lack of foreign language competence diminishes the capabilities of the United States in diplomacy, foreign trade, and in individual comprehension of the world in which we live and compete." And so in other words, the goal of the World Language Programs at that time was to support kids in interacting with the world around them. This weekend, I actually took the kids to Waveney Pool, and we were playing in the pool, 'cause it was, felt like a hundred degrees. And we noticed that the kids and the families around us were speaking a language other than English, quite a few of them. And I realized at that moment that our World Language Program today is not only to continue to help kids be effective in a global society, but actually to help them to connect with our new community members, our new peers, and our new friends right in town. So with that, I wanted to actually start with my EL data. As of today, there are seventy-seven students that have registered for this upcoming school year that have listed a language other than English on their registration form.
That's crazy.
So the languages listed are Mandarin, Albanian, Portuguese, Hebrew, Norwegian, German, Russian, Hindi, Swedish. Five of them registered just this weekend. I get alerts every time they, they register, so I know. I actually spoke with one of those families. They had a relocation officer, and she called me. And she wanted to know all about our town and all about our programs, and then, so interesting to see that two weeks later, they had registered into town. So many of these students will not qualify for EL services, but what it does mean is that many families are moving into town already speaking a language other than English. As you know from my previous presentations, the students that do qualify for EL services have to take the Lost Links Assessment every year to monitor their progress in English. This year, of the forty-seven students we tested, thirty met the criteria to exit. And we're really proud of the hard work that they did together with their teachers and their families and their tutors to meet this really rigorous standards. This is actually the end of my EL data, and I didn't know if there were any comments or questions just about EL before I move on into the World Language Program.
I just had one quick one. Can you give us a sense as to the thirty that exited when they entered?
So I can, I'm gonna have to email that too, 'cause I didn't bring that with me. So, for the most part, they exit within one to two years of entering. A couple of them moved from another district, so I don't know how many years they were in that district. But with us, they'll, they'll exit within one to three years of being with us.
Lizette, I think it's also important that you might want to talk about the supports that they will continue to need. Even though they exit from ELL services, it doesn't mean that they may be proficient in the content areas that they're being instructed in.
Right. So the Lost Links Assessment, it gives us, and it gives us information around how much English they have in order to access the curriculum. Right? So I just have enough English to understand what you're saying to me. But I still might not know those content-related words that go along with what you're saying to me. So I definitely still, those students are still gonna need that extra level of support. They might know, they might not understand some of the social studies or the science words or the content behind some of those words. And so, yes, they absolutely still need supports, but what this assessment is saying is they don't need EL support, right? They just need sort of, you know, just sort of extra help.
I just want to make sure I understood correctly what you said. So of the seventy-seven students that you had, not all of them will need EL support. Is that correct?
So what happens is when they register, there's three questions on the registration form. What's the first language you learn? What language do you speak at home? What language do your parents speak? If anything on that is a language other than English, I get alerted and I have to test them. Based on that assessment data is whether or not you qualify for EL supports.
Okay, so you'll have to test seventy-seven students as of today?
Yes, so I get those, I try to get them in over the summer, but yes.
Okay, and if, if you were to kind of compare that number to sort of what we've had in the past, 'cause obviously seventy-seven is a huge jump. If, if, you know, if you were to compare this time last summer, is this about where you were last summer? Is it higher? Is it lower? And are you?
So it's a little hard to explain, only because last year, the rules changed. So in the past, it was if you answered a language other than English on two of them, you had to be tested. And now it just is one. And I have to test you. I can't just meet you in the hallway and say, yeah, you're good. So, so I, it's hard for me to compare, right? Because my numbers are just larger, because sometimes it'll say the parents speak it, but the child doesn't speak it. I still have to have you, and I still have to assess you. But in comparison to last year, when the rules changed, this number is higher. Bless you.
And is that a state Board of Education requirement that changed, or a legislative initiative?
It's a federal goal.
It was a federal goal. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question. Do you, is it, in terms of distribution across grade levels, do you tend to see younger children? Or does it change often, year to year?
It changes the actual grade level, but for the most part, they tend to be in elementary school. It's, I mean, I say that, and I have three kids coming into high school, but it is rare to get kids at the upper grade levels.
All right. Thank you.
Last year, the board established a proficiency-based World Language Goal. As part of this goal, we were asked to monitor the percentage of students participating in a World Language at both Saks and the high school. Eighty-two point two percent of students at New Canaan High School were enrolled in a World Language this year. As you see on the chart, most students are opting to take their World Language within the first three years of being in high school. And as you see, there's a dramatic drop from junior to senior year. Am I going too fast? In preparation for my board presentation, I actually discovered that there are twelve students that were enrolled in two languages, and ten students who studied a language that was not offered at New Canaan High School through independent study. At Saks, we've learned over the last three year, three years, there's been an increase in enrollment in Spanish and French, and a decrease of enrollment in Latin. We haven't actually, just in case you're gonna ask, we haven't actually surveyed the kids. We do plan on asking them. It's a little tricky, because this is, these are fifth graders that are choosing, and it's often difficult to get in their heads when they're ten. They, they used to just say to me, I was tired of taking Spanish, so I just chose, you know, so it'll be interesting to see why they're choosing to stay in Spanish, but then opting not to take the other languages. So we're gonna still survey them next year. Last year, at my presentation, I was excited to share that Connecticut had adopted, had passed legislation, excuse me, around the seal of biliteracy. So if you remember, what this legislation stated was that if a, if a district decided to offer the program, and a student was able to take any of these assessments and meet the criteria that stated, that they would receive a seal right on their diploma, and on their transcript, it would read that they were biliterate. Because we were already using those first two assessments, we were able to, to grant students, award students a seal within that first year. So this year, approximately thirty school districts have opted to participate in the seal of biliteracy. Across the state, eleven hundred students approximately have received the seal. In this school year, fifty-seven percent of our graduating seniors were awarded a seal on their diploma. So my colleagues in the area are not sharing their data publicly, and some of them are not collecting the data, as they don't have board goals related to World Language. But in talking to them, I was able to discover that our percentage of students with the seal of biliteracy is amongst the highest. So, a few years ago, I did a presentation around proficiency, and I presented this upside-down pyramid. And one of the things I, I like about the pyramid is that it talks about how it's relatively easy to move from the lower levels in that novice area. It's pretty easy to move up. And the reason is that the content and the language that you need to be able to, that you need to know and be able to use is, is pretty limited, right? And so the idea is that, you know, when you're at the younger ages, for us, you're able to sort of move between novice low, novice mid, all the way up to novice high, pretty quickly. However, moving up to the intermediate high area, which is what the seal of biliteracy requires, is a lot more challenging. Because you're required to, you're required to remember all of the information that you've learned over time, and you need to be able to use it in a meaningful way to communicate. So for that reason, and knowing that the seal of biliteracy has such a high standard, on our own, we decided to, you know, create an expectation leaving eighth grade to be at that low-intermediate sort of novice-high area that would sort of put students in a good place as they enter high school, and really give them an ability to reach the goals for the seal of biliteracy. So sort of that's what our thinking is. In order to help kids become proficient in a language, it's also important that our teachers use best practices. And really, if you read any of the research, it's basically the teacher needs to stay in the target language, and the kids need to stay in the target language. That needs to be the sole vehicle of communication at all levels, including kindergarten, fourth grade, Level Four, and obviously AP and the UConn classes. There were some questions around the difference between the AP assessment and the Apple assessment. Last year in my presentation, I had some of those videos, clips of the actual assessment. I don't know if you guys remember, and it's like this woman, and she's talking to you, and she's asking you about your day, and you have, and you have to be able to respond. That's what the assessment is like. It's very generic. You don't have to know any one topic very well, but you have to know a little about a lot, right? Because you don't know what she's gonna ask you. And as the test gets harder, right, and as your proficiency level gets higher, the topics vary even more drastically. Again, wanting to assess how much you remember from the past and what you're doing today. The AP test is actually significantly more academic. Those are the six topics that it's based on. And you actually have to know the topic as you read the content that they give you. You have to remember that content. You have to remember the countries that you studied. You have to tie it all together into your speaking and into your writing. So it is significantly more academic than the Apple assessment is. But you can achieve your seal of biliteracy by passing the AP test with a score of three or higher as well. The, we are, we give the, we, we give the Alira assessment, which is the Latin version of the assessment. It's an interpretive reading test. And really, it's a timed test, because what they're also looking for you to do is to be able to read with fluency, not translate. Okay, so there, you only have forty-five minutes, and the test, actually, the question just moves to the next question. So it's not allowing you to translate it. And again, it's wanting to see if you can actually read for understanding. Now, the AP Latin test is content-heavy, as you can see. You really have to know Virgil and Caesar, and you have to be able to translate. As I mentioned before, we want, we're wanting to send students well-prepared into the high school. And to do that, we've set goals at that low-intermediate novice-high area for the different languages at the middle school. And as you can see, we did relatively well. Seventy-seven percent of the students meeting the goal in Spanish for speaking, ninety-seven in writing, sixty-seven in French for speaking, and eighty-five percent in writing. Our Spanish, our speaking scores continue to be lower, and it's really the assessment. I don't know if you remember last year, and I was telling you that the woman speaks into the, she's talking to you on this. It's like she's Skyping with you. But when she's done, it, it counts three seconds, and the red light goes on. You can't stop the red light. You can't ask for more time. You have to just start speaking. With the writing, there's no time limit. I can think, I can go back to it, I can take three days, I can take four days. There is no time. But with the speaking, it's immediate. I suppose the idea is if you're having a conversation, you can't really say, you know, I'm gonna get back to you, I'm gonna go translate that and come back, so I guess it makes sense. But it's that, the visual of the red light that scares them, and sometimes just they freeze. And then she goes on to the next question, so you can't really even go back. In Mandarin, the goal is a little lower than that intermediate. If you remember me sharing before, the Mandarin is a Level Five language, which means it's significantly harder to learn. And so we just chose a goal that was closer within reach, as you see, fifty-two percent of the kids met it in speaking and a hundred percent met it in writing. And we did really well on the Latin Alira test with eighty-five percent scoring I one or higher. The board added a goal last year around the best pathways for students who have completed. We do have students entering the high school now at Level Three, and we were concerned as to whether or not they would have enough courses to pick from at the top. In talking to guidance counselors and to kids, there didn't seem to be another course that they wanted to take. So the guidance counselors actually just suggested we take the numbers off of the courses. So they're all college-level courses, so if you don't take, if you take the numbers off, you don't have to take them in order. So you can take the UConn class, which is the first two Spanish classes up on the board, and you can take those first. You can take them after the AP class. You can interchange them, and they're still college-level courses, and the same with the French. We offer the same in the Latin, and then the Chinese, we offer the Chinese five. And that's my last slide. And as always, I thank you. I am truly honored to work for a district that has World Language Goals. I think that, I think about that all the day, all the time, and I thank you very much for that.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Sherry?
Hi. So first of all, I just wanna say kudos to everything, and it's, it's so amazing to sit here and hear this presentation when I can, I have vivid flashbacks of conversations about implementing FLECS. And it's just amazing in terms of how far we've grown with the World Language Program and the accomplishments and so forth. So, congrats to you and your team on that. So I just have a couple of questions. So first of all, we've talked before about proficiency versus fluency. And I just want to get a better sense, like when you look at the one funnel chart on this, the proficiency levels, and where the seal of biliteracy, kind of where that is. Can you, so relate to me, like, so if a student is achieving that seal, like, how close are they, how close are they to fluency? Like, actually being able to go out in the world and speak this language with other native speakers in that language?
So, so the definitions, I'm gonna, first, I'm gonna give you the, the book definition. So an intermediate high, intermediate mid, which is what the seal of biliteracy is talking about, it says that you, within the topics that you know, which now are varied, right, and a lot, you should be, you are still making mistakes. But the mistakes are understandable by somebody who speaks the language fluently. So you should be able to interact with almost anybody, as long as the topic is something that you know. What it's, I'm gonna give you a different way of defining that. If you look into the advanced low to advanced mid, that's what you need to be a teacher. So you're pretty close. You're pretty close. It's still, though, it's not academic, so you're not going to go to Spain and take a class and necessarily do well. You're still, you're gonna be like an ESL student on the reverse. Because academically, you don't have all of that language, but you will be able to make friends, and you're gonna be able to, you have sort of all that other language that you can have.
Right. Because what I hear a lot from high schoolers is, even though they're achieving like the seal of biliteracy, and they may be scoring very well in their academic courses, they don't have the confidence to go out and speak it. And I'm just wondering how we address that. And, I mean, is that the goal? Like, do we really want to be, I, I mean, it's one thing to be showing achievements on paper with a seal, but if we don't have students who are graduating and feeling confidence with their world language skills, like, I, I just wonder about that. And also, like, have we looked at, like, how, you know, our high schoolers then matriculate into college? Like, how many of them are continuing world language, and at what level do they enter at the college? Like, so are we kind of syncing up what our kind of achievement level is with what we think like? You know, so I know I have a student going, who's gonna be a freshman in college, and wasn't sure in terms of what level he would be matriculating, right? So I'm wondering if we've looked at that and to guide our high schoolers in terms of, like, you know, we see you graduating at this level, and this is what that means if you want to continue that at the college level.
So that is a good question, and I have to ask Cindy, sort of, I don't, you know, just, I don't know what the colleges are saying about that. I know one of the things that they're trying to do with the seal is have sort of a common definition of what that means. Because I do know that in the past, some of the feedback has been, I don't know what your A means. So you got an A in your class.
Right.
Right, I don't know what that means. So, so one of the things about the seals is defining what A means, B means, right? Because it's just saying, this is the way you speak, and this is what you can do with language. So my question, I guess, would be, that college, is that college defining that level in that way? Because now that I can make that direct correlation for you, I don't know what the college is saying. So that's one I'd have to ask sort of Cindy with the colleges. So that's one I'd have to ask sort of Cindy what the colleges are asking on the reverse. As far as feeling motivated and confident, I do know that we talked about having internships where you speak a language other than English. So the hard part is around distance and about how far we'll let kids go. And then when you, when you put those parameters, you're limited to sort of where they can go.
Mm-hmm.
I know some kids will intern with world language teachers. We had one at the high school who, you know, who did presentations and did mini lessons and did. So, you know, it's, again, it's still finding that. I, you know, I still want to sort of work, you know, with the folks with internship to find something that's closer. I have, I just have a hard time with that.
I would be happy to offer to meet with you offline on that, because I think there are so many opportunities in our surrounding communities with, you know, English as a second language.
Yeah.
And parents who don't speak English. And I know one time I contacted you through my nonprofit and you were, you very quickly, one of your students translated something and turned it around. And I think there's tons of those opportunities that actually that type of application and immersion would be extremely, real-world application would be extremely beneficial to our students. So I'd be happy to.
And I think.
Because I support that idea so much.
I think to your point, it would prove to them they can, right? So I would love to, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Others? Julie?
Hi, Lizette. So you have the percents of the incoming sixth graders, what the breakout of what languages they're taking. Is that pretty consistent when they get to the high school level? Do you, and I don't know if you've gathered that specific data, like, do they tend to stay with those languages? So that's sort of my first question. And then my second question is, obviously, there are going to be swings in what languages kids are interested in. You know, you see, as a French major myself, I was a little, I used to be a little sad that French seemed to be declining in popularity, and so I'm so thrilled to see that it's increased. And, but then, of course, the opposite has happened with Latin, at least at the sixth grade level. So, you know, I don't know what you attribute the change to. I know, as you said, it's hard to get into fifth graders' minds, but I'm just curious if you have any sense of that for when, when they're at the high school level, if that also changes, if you find kids switching languages from eighth grade to ninth grade and maybe why?
So the first answer about SACS, so these are my sixth grade numbers, but as you know, they're six, seven, eight, because they have to commit to the three years. One of the things I can tell you, I don't, I don't watch how many of those kids stay, but I will tell you, is my French one class was very small, and I did not have enough students to take Latin one. So if anybody's changing, they're changing into Spanish. But what's happening is, we've talked so much about the seal at the middle school level, that kids are understanding that if I switch into a one, my chances to get the seal are good, but they're not great. And they're great if I stay in my language, right? Because I have more language, otherwise I'm starting something new. So that's one piece of it. I will say that some of the kids did not know there was a way to get a seal in Latin. I was actually in the hallway when I heard a kid say, well, I'm taking my Apple test for the seal, you know, too bad you don't have one. And this kid goes, I have one in Latin. I was like, oh, you do? I mean, they're having this conversation. I'm like, uh, hi. You know, I'm interested in myself, and I'm sort of like, well, why don't you know this? So, you know, sort of having to be better communicators around that to the middle school kids as well. Because I'm wanting them, I don't want them to switch thinking, oh, it's the only way I can get it is if I switch to Spanish or French.
So do the teachers start talking about the seal at the sixth grade level, then?
At the, we're going to try and start talking about it at the fifth grade level. Because if, if we're honest about choices in fifth grade, kids shouldn't be making those by themselves. So in our presentations, that we share them with parents, right? Because I don't know if kids know what they're ten, right? So I'm not sure they're thinking about when they're seventeen. But if I share that presentation with a parent and the parent sees that seal's on there, they're sort of having that dialogue with their kids, too. So that's that piece. And then did I answer that question about the high school?
Yeah.
So I'm not really watching that, but I can start sort of asking the kids and how many of them are switching over to another language.
Okay. And do you, like, is there any, again, because they're all taking languages, so that's great, and it shouldn't matter what language, but is there any concern when you see, you know, like, one, like, interest level from one language drop? But again, I know it's outweighed by increased interest in a different language, so maybe that doesn't matter.
I am a little concerned about the Latin numbers, only because I don't really understand them. Like, I don't understand what's happening. And I do somehow want to get into these kids' heads. It's hard, because if it's the Spanish teacher that's asking them, they all seem to think that they have to answer Spanish because of Spanish. I mean, we try surveying them, like, what, you know, what language are you taking? And the kids are like, well, I was going to take Spanish, but my mom said. It's like, it's okay. I just want to know sort of what you're taking and why, and don't worry and don't feel bad. So somehow finding a way to survey them and getting to sort of what their thinking is. And again, I don't know why they're not choosing to stay in it.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So just for what it's worth, another reason these numbers are so important to carefully monitor is the teacher certifications, right? Much like science, the teachers are certified in Latin or French or Spanish. And rarely is someone cross-certified, and certainly no one's in all three languages. So the section sizes and the number of staff we need, what have you, is determined by the enrollments in those different classes and how we manage all of that. And I just, since we've been working on it for the last few months, commend Lizette in doing that work and, you know, working with jail, working with principals, working with everybody to piece together this very complicated intricate puzzle that's driven by student interest. But it, so it's another good reason to continue to monitor this closely.
Others? Yana?
So I always have to ask about the AP tests. And sort of, I guess it's twofold. What percentage of the kids who are enrolled in AP by language, and this may be something that we can get later and it'd be interesting over the last year or two, what percentage of the kids that are enrolled in the AP Class One take the exam? Because I'm hearing that in some of the languages, kids are not taking the exam and they're foregoing the bump in their GPA or the advanced credit option for that, for that exam. And then also, of the kids that take it, what percentage of those kids are getting a three or higher? Because I, you know, I just, and by language, I'd love to understand, are we, you know, because I think it may speak to sort of what Julie's getting to. I know, you know, like, when one of my children was entering high school, I, you know, encouraged her to maybe switch to a different language that might have been, had more practical applications. And her response was, well, I can't take the AP test and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And whereas the other child, seeing sort of what my daughter was going through, said, forget it, I'm changing languages and I don't care about the AP test. So, yeah, I would just like to see sort of how we're doing on that, because I think people start to talk and, you know, it may not be accurate information. They may be hearing from one person, and I think it would dispel some.
So I am going to have to get back to you on how many kids take it versus how many students are enrolled.
Okay.
I don't have that data. I don't, I don't know. This is Bill's data, but I'm going to tell you anyway. I mean, I have the world language AP scores from just this year. So this year, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen students took the AP Spanish test and all of them passed, seven fives, seven fours, and two threes. One student took the AP Chinese test. Now, we don't offer AP Chinese, but some of them will take it, enrolled in the Chinese five. And the one student passed, and he passed at a five. And this year.
Was he a native speaker?
He was not a native speaker.
Oh, okay.
The AP French, again, we didn't offer it this year. We didn't have the enrollment for it. But still, two students took it, and one got a five and one got a three. So this year, anybody who sat for the world language AP test passed it.
And what about, because there, is there, did nobody sit for Latin?
Nobody, we had, nobody enrolled for it. We actually ran two sections of the ECE class, this past year.
That's the UConn?
That's the UConn class, sorry.
Okay. So there was no technical AP Latin?
Class this past year.
Okay. So it was two years, it's been two years since, because I know.
Yes.
Okay. Is that just nobody wanted to take it?
Nobody, yeah, nobody wanted to take it. It's supposed to run this year.
I just want to say, as a parent, I preferred the ECE, the UConn option. It just seemed like longer, a longer period of instruction, and it didn't have the same AP test pressure. I thought it was great. I mean, I wish.
It just doesn't, that ECE only works for UConn. It doesn't necessarily work for other universities. That's the only, is that correct?
It could work. It could work. It might not, you know, it might not apply to a language. It might just bump them. It might end up being an elective. Actually, my older daughter, she took the UConn Spanish, and that was five years ago, and that actually gave her a little leeway so she could travel. So it counted for something, but I'm not sure if it counted.
Right. It's not credit. It's not cred, I'm not sure, except for UConn, I'm not sure, it doesn't give you credit at the university.
It was credit. It just wasn't.
Yeah, it could be elective credit, but not credit towards a divisional requirement in language. But then they generally take a placement test going in regardless, which would tell them where they have to be.
Right.
Right. Yep. But you're right. The AP does build into that, that one day, that one test, those few hours. And so for some students, ECE is a much better option.
Other questions? Heidi?
I was just wondering if you'd taken a look at our draft goals for world language for next year?
I did.
And if you thought we had them right, or if you thought we ought to add a few more things?
I thought you had them right, in my personal opinion. And I think, I think there is a change a little bit. One of the things that we had talked about was with the graduation requirement needing a world language. I think, I felt that we had answered the question about the top, and now I'm wondering about all kids being able to take a world language. And I think that there is some language around that instead. Okay. Yes?
There is.
There is, right?
Yes. I'm breathing easy because we did talk about this.
I figured you had.
Page six and seven.
And it's right on page six, where we're looking at reviewing and developing further pathways for students. And we had some conversation about.
So starting from the bottom.
Yep.
So not, not only talking about the top, but what else can all students be able to do?
Right.
And I like that goal, and I just had one tweak to it, which is probably implicit in what you stated. But I was wondering if we wanted to add the two words, "and proficiency," so it would read, "review and further develop program pathways with a focus on continuously increasing student participation and proficiency."
There you go.
In the world languages at New Canaan High School. It's what you were going to do anyway, but I didn't.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. It's fantastic.
You're welcome.
I just had, I think, two quick questions. One was, you know, one of the things you had in your presentation was teachers using the foreign language in class at least ninety percent of the time. Is that something that is difficult for them to do? And is that something that you sort of monitor over time or talk to teachers about? I can imagine it's very difficult with kids who aren't necessarily comfortable speaking in a foreign language to actually make that happen at ninety percent. But how do you, how do you think about that and helping teachers, you know, do it more often?
We talk about it all the time, all the time. I mean, it's, it is really hard, because you're wanting kids to be actively engaged and happy, and too often, they want to shut down, and so you're, you know, so the idea that we talk about is what else can you do without reverting into English, right? So, and we talk about it from kindergarten to high school. And to be honest, some of the high school teachers, when we meet K-12, get their ideas from the kindergarten teacher. Because, you know, because you're tired, you're saying the same thing, you're pointing and they're, you know, and the teacher says, whoa, there's these three words, or I switch it up, and I play a game in the middle, and they're like, okay, I'll do anything, because it's just, you know, it's not, whatever I'm doing isn't working. They go to conferences. I mean, people are talking about this all the time, because although we know it's important, they know it's important. I mean, they know. It doesn't mean they all want to do it, right? And so it's, it's sort of getting them to engage with you and meet you halfway. One of the things that they're trying now at middle school, which seems to be working, is timers and saying to kids, you know what? I'll put a timer on the smartboard, and if you'll do it for me until that timer goes off, I'll give everyone a break, right? And so slowly, you're increasing the timer until you get them to realize, well, you know what? We just went three quarters of the class and we were fine, right? And so they're, you know, they're sort of giving in a little more. It's still really hard. I don't even, I can't even tell you where it's harder, because you got fourth grade kids who, I don't want to do anymore, you know, eighth graders who don't want to do it, you know, juniors, who, I mean, they're all, at some point, sort of push back, but it's hard, but they all realize. I mean, the teachers know it's important, and so they just really have to commit to it. But yes, I spot check all the time. By the way, kids are the best at telling you the truth. So you sit behind some kids and they're like, what is she doing? I've never heard her speaking like this. And I go, really? No, that never happened. But, you know, we do, we, again, we really talk about it a lot, and the teachers know it's important.
Right.
And I will say, this, this test has really pushed them, because the teachers don't know what's on it, right? They know the topics it can be, but how do you know? Is she going to ask you about the weather? Is she going to ask you about the New York store? Is she going to ask you how to get to, you know, the class about a fun?
They just have to speak more every class.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last one is, is there any assistance that we provide for independent studiers? Or are they just truly kind of on their own, studying a different language?
So they're in theory supposed to be on their own, but they do have mentors. If it's a language, we have someone on staff that speaks. Teachers are teachers and they help. But they, the programs that they pick have supports. But again, if, if there is someone in the school that can help. There is a student that is studying Japanese, and give it to Ms. Rosenthal, who has decided to also learn Japanese to help the student to. So, I mean, it is, you know, and she's also working with the kid with the German and the, you know, it's, you know, teachers want, they love it, right? They love that kids are doing this. And so I see them as much as possible, helping them. And by the way, these kids all take the apple. All of these independent study kids take the apple, because they want to see how well they're doing on their own. And if they meet the criteria, we will give them a seal.
That's great.
And we do have a well-developed independent study program. So they're, these students are doing their independent studies in language. We have other students doing other independent studies.
Right.
In a variety of different disciplines. We have a teacher who's the advisor of the independent study program, and there are pretty stringent expectations placed on the students who are in there. They certainly go through and work through the structured independent study, which results in the credit.
Great. Yana?
You know, you mentioned that right now, you don't have any information from the surrounding districts, except for like word of mouth, on how they're doing with the achievement on the Seal of Bilinguism. Is the state going to be collecting that data? And so we won't have any way of knowing how we compare, except for?
So the state said it's not collecting the data. So I assume at some point they will.[1643.42] So, I assume at some point they will. So, you know, I feel like that's always what's next. I have a feeling that when districts start to do well, that's when they're gonna start to share, right? And, and some of the districts I called, you know, were very honest. You know, one of them said, it's very, very hard, very hard, you know, and they said, twenty of our kids got it. And I said, twenty percent? And she said, no, twenty. So, you know, that's not someone who's gonna stand up in front of their Board of Ed and say, you know, we have this great program, and, and so I get it, right? And I, I am so grateful then, right? So when I hear that, I think, wow. You know, maybe sometimes we're too hard on ourselves or whatnot, but, but I do think they all, when I started to ask, they all started to say, maybe we should all kind of talk about, sort of, what are you doing? And how are you getting kids there, and?
Because that was kind of the next question I was actually gonna ask. So you talked about going to conferences, and sort of, how do you, as language instructors, get best practices? And, you know, because it's hard. Languages are hard, and it's, you know, a lot of memorization and a lot of working, and it's hard. And how do you get kids, you know, how do you share information about what works with kids, and?
So, we, we go to conferences as well, but I have to tell you, the best thing is observing. Because sometimes you tell me something, but I'm not hearing it from your perspective, I'm hearing it from mine. And so it sounds great, and then I go in and I watch it, and I'm like, okay. Or it doesn't sound great, but then I go in and I'm blown away, because I just think, wow, you undersold that. That's just phenomenal. So we do, we, we take turns observing each other. We host people, and then they'll host for us. We do PDs together sometimes, so that we can learn from the same, and then collaborate on watching each other, writing units together, and saying, can we see how that plays out for you versus for us, and, and whatnot, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Enjoy your dinner.
Okay. Next up is the enrollment update with Ms. Pianca, in her first presentation, her new role.
Good evening. You have in front of you the most current projected enrollment numbers as of today. We've been keeping close eye on these numbers, and you will, as you can see from looking at them, our, our kindergarten numbers are, at this point, of three sections across the district. So you'll see one section at East and two at South. We have gone from two hundred and thirty-three kindergartners last October first to three hundred and six kindergartners. The other thing that we're also closely monitoring is our first grade at East. We are in constant communication with our registrar, and we'll be meeting, actually on Wednesday, with the principals, Dr. Corente and Dr. Letzzi and I, to review where we are. And wanna keep a close eye on that. And also on the fact that between now and around August fifth, we will see, we'll continue to see some movement out of the district and back in, and so we wanna reassure you that we're continuing to look at that, and to ensure that we have the appropriate staffing based on where we are thinking that we're trending, and where we ultimately will, will land. And we'll keep you in the loop.
Great.
So if you're.
It's pretty amazing.
If you're wondering, our projections were two forty-seven for kindergarten this year. And that's where we built our budget off and what have you, and we're at, as you see, the three oh six. Overall, we are sixty-one students above projections. Again, but this is if we were to open today, and we do, we'll, we'll have some changes and some adjustments, that's bound to happen. But those kindergarten numbers have continually come in strong, really since the winter-spring, when we began our enrollment there, so. We are over in kindergarten, and we're over in first grade. In kindergarten, we're fifty-nine over projections, and in first grade, we're sixteen over projections. Middle school's just about right on. The high school's up about fifteen students at this point, but again, there could be.
Up about fifteen students?
Above projections.
Yeah.
Yep. Again, we're sixty-one students overall above projections, and on a year-to-year basis, about eighty student swing.
And that, that three oh six is about as high as it's been in, what, three to five years at least?
Oh, more than, at least six years on the three oh six, because generally what happens is the kindergarten numbers come in, and then when they go into first grade, we pick up another wave of enrollments as students who maybe are doing a fifth, a five-year-old program somewhere else, may come in, or others that move to the district. So, if that holds and the trends continue, I would anticipate that that will become the largest grade in our district for the next, for the foreseeable future. But that'll be a very large grade that goes through. If the three oh six holds, it could easily get above any of the other numbers that we have in the district.
Wow. It's great to see a lot of kids beginning school in New Canaan.
Yeah, and it reinforces our message just about how difficult it is to predict our kindergarten numbers. One year does not a trend to make, and we know that this past year, our kindergarten numbers were a little bit lower than we had anticipated and projected, and you know, the projections then change, because they are straight line based on three and five years. But, you know, we may be entering a time where we go up, up and down. We, we had a period, a long period of time where we had a larger class, and a smaller class, and a larger class, and a smaller class. And certainly looks like we're being set up. The setup is similar to what we've had experienced back then, so we'll keep an eye on it.
And in terms of total sections, are we, we don't know yet, but we'll probably be up a couple at least, right?
We are, yeah. Again, if we, these numbers were to, if we were to open tomorrow with these numbers, we'd be up a couple of sections.
Are you just talking about, though, in the, in the kindergarten sections? Because I, as I look, I just want, I was looking across the, all the elementary, and it looks like we're down one, if you net all the.
Sure, if you, well, sir, and I'm thinking about compared to budget, because if you recall, we took some down from budget. But that, the two in the first grade, if we were to open today, we would likely have, we'd have to split that first grade over at East. Right now, we're holding on to look at and see if there are some other withdrawals or changes, but that first grade over at East right now, twenty-one point two, is well above. So if we were to, we were to take that down by adding another section there, we'd be in the high seventeens for the average, which would squarely within the range. You know, the twenty point three at South, we'd have that conversation that makes say, but right there, that would get you at zero year-to-year. But again, we, we brought down the budget by a couple, and so we are, at that point, we'd be three sections, I believe, above where we had budgeted.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Next is the school start and end times update. Dr. Letzzi?
Yes, just a, a brief update. As you know, we've been developing the scenario that the board identified at its last meeting. It seems like a while ago, but it was just the last meeting. And we've been developing potential participants for a future committee, as we've discussed, who would, which would provide feedback once the details are developed from that scenario. So as we're developing the scenario, I just wanna share with you a couple of quick things. One, as you know, the scenario that was determined by the board for us to take a deeper look at had the three elementaries going together at seven forty-five, the high school in tier two going at eight twenty, and tier three, which was all of Saks going together at nine oh five. We're looking at this, and it's a good conversation to have right after looking at enrollment, because we're now, we're looking at it with the actual students that we have. So we're looking at these, you know, three hundred and six kindergartners and the existing students, and starting to look at what the, the routing may look like. So as we're doing that, I just wanna share with the board that there may be a plus or minus five or ten-minute change to, and once we do these actual routes to these start and end times. There's several variables that factor into the analysis, so we wanna be sure that the board's comfortable, and in understanding that, the final scenario may have to have some of these times a little bit adjusted. We do believe that we'll find some time and some efficiency by having the elementary schools go first. There may be some advantages to this. Especially since the buses will be staged in three different areas of the town, as, when they do the drop-off in the morning, or after they do their, drop-off in the morning, or after they bring them home in the afternoon. So, being staged that way, we think may be helpful in order to drop off the elementaries, and then flip around and go out and pick up the, the high school students, for instance. But we also know that there's gonna be some constraints that we run up against, so just wanted to be realistic in our expectations as we're trying to develop this. Because we are going from forty-five minutes between each of the tiers. We're shortening that time. Essentially, we're keeping the end time the same, but trying to start fifteen minutes earlier. So, we're try, we're trying to figure out how to do that. And we're optimistic, but we also need to be realistic about the constraints that we have. So just wanted to make, make sure you're aware of that. The other is, we've been generating a list of potential participants for a committee in the fall. As the list has come together, and we've talked about it a bit, it's become obvious that it will by necessity be a pretty large group. So as a result, we're thinking about what the structure might look like. You know, we've, we've probably all been members of large committees and left feeling that our time wasn't necessarily used in the best ways. So, as we're thinking about it, and talking about it a bit, we're considering running it similar to what we did with a focus group in the past, where we have somebody come in and facilitate for us, and have a, a large group, maybe it's thirty-five or forty folks, that are invited to participate. And very purposefully and intentionally invited to participate. And we've got, you know, again, a list of people that we've been putting together. But by doing that, we think that we can get to sort of pros and cons of scenarios, and you have a pretty rich discussion that answers a number of questions. It would be open to the public, of course. Folks that were invited would be there to participate, to listen, to learn, and work together. And overall, the goal of that group would be advisory to the Board of Ed, to share their feedback and thoughts and comments or what have you with the board, you know, in the future. So we're putting that list together. The invites will go out sometime between now and the next Board of Ed meeting. You know, we'll be as inclusive as possible with different stakeholders, both in the district, in the community, in the parent community, in the service provider community. We think about, you know, the Y and parking wreck and other groups. So that's where the list starts to get pretty long. We also wanna have teachers from all levels and other folks, because what we're talking about is a change for every single, you know, student, staff, everybody here. And so we wanna make sure that all the voices are in the room for that conversation as we go through and have it. Ultimately, you know, we're gonna stay focused on our goal, which is optimizing the school schedule for all of our students K-12. And that'll be, again, our, sort of our north star as we go through and have this conversation and do this work. So I wanted you to know that was coming together and going forward, but it's gonna be a larger group, so this, when we think committee, when I think committee, I think eight to ten people in a room, sitting, talking, and really hassing things out. But you just can't get there when we're talking about something this wide-ranging and broad, so.
Yeah.
It just wanted to define that a little bit, and let you know what, what our thinking was around that. And that invite's gonna go out prior to the next Board of Ed meeting.
Sounds good. Any questions? I just had one question on the, the staging. When you talk about staging, do you mean having the buses, you know, line up at West, and line up at East, and line up at South at the beginning of the day? Is that?
Sure. So the staging works in a couple of different ways. One, right now, the way that we run our tiers, so our first tier with South, with Saks and the high school, all the buses are on this south part of town, right? And then they have to go all the way up and get kids, and then come all the way back down. Right? So in the morning, when they drop kids off, they have to travel the hundred twenty-five miles of roads again. By starting with the elementaries, when they drop off at, say, West, they can then, they don't have to come to the south part of town. They can start picking up high school kids who live on the west part of town, and then go straight to the high school. So I think that, that can save us a little bit of time as we, as we think about, you know, how to run those pieces. The same works in the afternoon, right? So while we, first, we won't need all of the buses in the afternoon to do the high school, because we'll have enough buses to do more kids than in one building. So those buses that will, they'll drop off their elementary students, they won't come back to the high school, they'll go right over to Saks to begin to stage for that third tier. The other buses will go through and do their dismissals, and drive those kids home, and then they'll go over to Saks. And the shorter runs will join in the first tier. Those longer runs would come in for that second tier of dismissal at Saks.
Yeah.
So it's sort of, we're hoping that, it's really complex and challenging, and it's, it's a lot of really careful analysis to get to that, at those actual times. Because again, as you know, we send out information to parents and families that say, your child will be picked up at exactly this time, and we have a plus or minus window, but it's pretty tight, you know, it's one after the other. So as we're doing that, we're trying to sort of do something that, as far as I know, hasn't, hasn't been done kind of in this way. But we're used to that.
Yeah.
If this is the right, the good way to do it, then we're gonna figure it out and make it happen.
Good. All right.
We'll, we'll keep developing that scenario.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up is the action items. First is the district goals and objectives. Anything you'd like to, do you wanna walk through it, or it's really?
Yeah, we have.
Or we can read it separately, one or the other?
You have two copies in front of you. One is a clean copy, a relatively clean, and the other is the marked-up copy. The.
There's, I mean, there's a lot to go through, so.
We'll just take it away. You'll see that some of the language is continue, right, as we've begun things, and we've tried to. And, you know, this has been, Jill and I have worked through this for a while. We've sent it out to the district administrators. We've received their feedback and continued to work through. You know, we remain committed to the five overarching goals that we have, and the first is our teaching and learning goal. We wanna, and one F, we're gonna continue to research best practices regarding standards-based grading systems at the middle school. And one of our building administrators has been doing a good work, good deal of work around that for us already, and gotten, been developing some research and doing some reporting, so we'll be able to share some more information with the board about that in the future. The, sort of next step in our work around the vision of the graduate, as we, as we've discussed here with the board, is to continue to develop that vision, and to expand the committee to include board members, community members, and others. So we'll continue doing that work, and there was even some further refinement done on that just today. On the next page, and it's, sorry about the numbering, but again, it's the marked-up copy four. We're gonna continue to investigate the viability of various scheduling options at the high school and Saks, and that's something that we began, as I mentioned before, with a couple of groups of teachers that have gone out and done some visits. And we're gonna keep that work going and report back to the board on, over the course of the year, around progress, with that focus on student health and wellness. The revised graduation requirements that was presented, were presented to the board earlier. We're gonna implement those and continue doing that work. Then the D is our next step in the school start, start and end time conversation, which is to evaluate the school start time options identified by the board, which is the, what we've just talked about. And share periodic updates with the board and community with a focus on optimizing school schedules for all students K-12. So we'll continue to share out with the board regularly our progress on that, and continue to develop pathways for open communication. Our STEM work, you know, years ago, it was to start to, it was to research, to begin, and now there's a, there was some continue, and then after you continue for a while, you do some evaluation. So it's to evaluate current STEM programs, further develop opportunities. Next-generation science standards continue to be our guideposts for the work in, in there. And we're implementing, evaluate, the, aligned with next-generation science standards, the revised ninth-grade course, which is geo-physical science. And to next, look at the bio-curriculum and its alignment with next-generation science standards in order to determine revisions needed there. You know, we've been doing the work around our K-12 health curriculum, so to implement the new units of study in grades one through four and nine through twelve that had been drafted, and to continue the ongoing process of, of revision. The D is looking at the health schedule, and Dr. Corente's been talking about that for a bit, and working through with the principals and others on how best to optimize our current staffing in, in order to deliver the instruction in grades one through four and nine through twelve. Same, really, K-12, I should say, because it really is a K-12 thing. So how do we look at the staff that we have, optimize their schedule in order to deliver the program with people who are health-certified where possible, or to train our teachers to be able to deliver it in their classrooms? If need be. And Jill, certainly feel free to jump in anytime. You know, we are, we've really worked hard over the last few years to partner with our community organizations, like New Canaan Cares, the Health and Human Services, et cetera. And to work together in our efforts to educate the community around the health topics that we're teaching in our classrooms, and things that we see, you know, as, as certain needs. I think Bill's department, formerly Darlene's department, has been really doing quite a bit of work with New Canaan Cares and others, and thanks to Dr. Bliss and folks.
Yeah, it makes sense.
It's to really formalize those partnerships and make that another thing that we talk about and focus on and share with the board. Of course, the technology focus that we've had around our STEM, and now with our work in developing the learning management system. So this is to, this is five A, you know, to support our teacher leaders in their work, using the Train the Trainer model. To look at our digital citizenship curriculum. Let's see. Okay. Actually, the LMS hasn't come up yet. It's coming, there it is. MG, it's on the next page. Identify and train teacher leaders as they develop their knowledge and skills using the LMS at each of the grade levels. And then to provide specifically, targeted, ongoing staff training, to, learning management system for students and staff in grades nine through twelve. Now, our implementation will begin there. We have some other teachers and folks who've started using it, who really wanna continue using it. We're gonna develop them as our teacher leaders. They'll learn right alongside with our high school folks, so that when the time comes, we have a cadre of teachers in-house who can lead this work at the respective grade levels of buildings. RTI, or SRBI, using our acronyms, Response to Intervention. The, continue to use SAPPLE framework to guide our socio-emotional behavioral interventions, particularly tier two or tier three. Develop and implement lessons in grade six that support executive functioning needs. This is something we've talked about for quite a while, and something that, it's the right place for it, you know, around executive functioning and, and that management of that work. Monitoring and support the RTI services provided to our English-language learner students, you know, because Lizette mentioned it briefly tonight, but even though students may or may not be in the EL program, they do need ongoing support and ongoing work. You know, it's one thing to be able to pass the, the proficiency task, but it is another to understand academic language. And I recall Lizette telling me years ago that it can take up to seven years of immersion in a language for an individual to develop the vocabulary that you would consider a scholarly vocabulary. So that, those ongoing supports need to be in place for our students that have, you know, maybe began in the EL program and then placed out of it afterwards. We mentioned before, again, with Lizette, the, we did, we added the speaking and writing portions of the ALIRA. And on seven D, it's to review and further develop the program pathways with a focus on continuously increasing student participation in the world languages at the high school, because we see.
And proficiency. We added the word proficiency.
Cannot forget Penny's language.
And proficiency. Yes, 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 we are. Of course we are.
Thank you, Ray.
Of course we are. Of course we are. I do think it speaks a little bit to what, Cherry, what you were talking about, with some of the, some of the things I've heard too, that students are academically strong in this, but they're not comfortable really speaking in the language. And, you know, if we can put together some other opportunities for students, maybe they've worked through AP, but give them some, a conversational Spanish opportunity, conversational French, some opportunities to, to just become comfortable speaking in the language. It's, we don't have a, a great deal of opportunities right here in the school. I do, do think we can partner and do, do a great job with that.
I think you're right, and the surrounding communities, there are a lot of foreign language speakers.
Yeah, I think we could have some great opportunities there. But if we could also develop some classes for kids that they can take, it's lower stress, they're not working towards an AP test or anything like that, they're just really working in, like a, a culture and conversation type class. We can keep them, and then for our Latin students, we're talking about even a mythology-type course, you know, where they can learn, learn the myths, learn some of the language, just become, keep them thinking and working in that, in the language, without having the pressure of working towards a high-stakes test. without having the pressure of working towards a high stakes test. I think that could be helpful. Lizette agreed when we put it together. Alan has, he began this year looking at the K-12 music and art curriculum. So he's been working to establish the timeline with long and short-term goals. He's going to share that out with us next meeting, I believe.
Obviously.
Yep. And then he's going to continue developing units of study and evaluating staff to look at the best models of instruction. So Alan will be coming to meet with the board in August and talking more specifically about that. And then the, in the back here, page eight, specific to our downtown campus program. It's to continue to develop that program focusing on meeting student needs in an alternative educational setting. We've developed and we've been implementing a comprehensive curriculum that provides for the academic, social, emotional needs of our kids, monitoring student progress and success. And then, you know, this last piece, to provide opportunities for students to participate in the extracurricular program and activities and earn an NCPS diploma. That's sort of the, some of the foundational goals we had putting the program together. We just finished our first year very successfully and we're going to continue working through. Now Tammy will be working with that program directly and Bill will be overseeing and guiding her work. We're in a good place there.
Great.
Jill, feel free.
Now, and maybe we want to take questions on goal number one before we move to goal number two. If there's anything specific that the board would like to know more information about.
Any questions, Deanna?
So I was a little, I guess I would like to get a little more explanation about the standards-based grading being moved out of just the STEM and into an all-discipline area and the objectives. We could discuss that.
I don't think it's to move it out of just the science area. I think it's to research it further, to explore it as far as whether it would be an opportunity or not. Obviously, we would need to come forward to the board to share all of our findings. So we're just at that research stage. Are there other middle schools that are using standard-based grading? And how are they utilizing standard-based grading? And then is it a good practice for us to be using standard-based grading across all core disciplines or not? And I think it's more of a research phase at this point. Melinda's done some good communication this year. So we felt that we had mastered the objective in the science area as far as how she should go about communicating and talking with parents regularly about it. And now I think we're just at a point to say, is this something that we should do in other disciplines? Is it something that we should continue in science? I think it's just that conversation and bringing it to that next level. So I guess.
Well, it just grew apart out of the conversation we had where I think one of the board members shared, if it's the right thing to do, why aren't we doing it everywhere? If it's not the right thing to do, why are we doing it anywhere, right?
But I felt like we weren't at a place where we felt like it was the right thing even in science still. So that's where I'm confused.
This isn't meant to espouse one position or another. It's really to say, we're going to research and share that research, the best practices around this.
Yeah, I'm actually, I mean, personally, and I'd love to get more board feedback. I'm not personally comfortable moving it beyond science until we agree as a, because I, the last board discussion on this topic was very controversial on the, on the effectiveness of it within science itself. And I would hate to divert board resources and administrative resources to the study of something we haven't even agreed to on the science yet. That would be my personal.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I don't think that we've, as you said, that we've mastered this in science. I think the most of the feedback I still receive from parents is they don't understand it and it, it's not effectively communicated. So I think we still have the questions in science that we had the last time the board discussed this. So yeah, I was also surprised to see this as a goal for all disciplines because I feel like we haven't yet answered the questions in science that were raised from the last board discussion. I mean, I know we have some other parents here, like in middle school. But I mean, we asked some questions just about how initially this was brought forward because there was some thought that, you know, in higher education, they'd be going toward SPG. But it seems pretty definitively that higher education is not. And so one of the board's, one of the board's key questions at that last discussion was then why would we be, you know, leading a grading system that's not being adopted elsewhere? I mean, so I.
Maybe, can I just make a suggestion, which is, because I, I feel like there have been some issues as it relates to standard-based grading, whether it's communication or understanding within the community. But at the same time, I feel like we should evaluate what's best, whether it's standard-based grading or not. But to your point, make a decision as to what we're going to do or where we're going to head. If it's continued research, it's continued research. If we're going to make a decision to, you know, use, use SPG across the district, then we can make that decision or we can make a decision not to. But it, it does feel like in this upcoming year, we should make, we should study it as a district and make a decision one way or another. So I think it makes sense to be in here. Maybe we should change the language to say, continue to research or just research best practices regarding grading systems. And whether it's just at the middle school or, you know, more broadly. It's just something that I feel like as a board, we should, you know, study, learn more about and make a decision on. Yeah?
So I, I would disagree on that only because, you know, I, I have a child who participated in the first rollout in a study. And I would not want any other children until we figure out, you know, what we're going to do to, because I'm guessing to be able to do this research, you're going to have to have pilot classes to be able to understand the effectiveness of it. And so I just.
Yeah, I'm actually.
That wasn't the goal, no.
No, the goal's not to have pilot classes.
We'd be way ahead of, I think, where staff is or where we are, the community is. I mean, really, the intent.
I agree, I wouldn't want pilot classes. I would want to do research.
And I just don't think we, I mean, I don't think we achieved the goal in the science. And I just, I do feel very strongly, and I think the board communicated its strong concern. And so to see, I mean, we, on multiple occasions, expressed our strong concern with this. And so to see it being studied more broadly before we even have addressed the concern in a small pilot area. I understand what you're saying, Brennan, but I strongly disagree because we haven't gotten to a point where we're comfortable with its implementation in the science program.
Right.
So I guess a question that I would raise is what information would we want to have to determine whether this is a best practice in science or not? I know that we've been starting to look at data and where children move into high school. And we have that kind of data and we've tracked that kind of data. So if that's a place maybe where we want to begin to look at some of that data and look at percentages of where our students are enrolling into their high school courses, where they may have enrolled in the years past. I'm just feeling that we don't want to keep it tucked in the science because we do want to look at it and I think we want to answer that question. Is it something that we should or should not do? So I understand that maybe we don't want to put it in all core areas. I think the purpose of it was really just for research, to just try to answer those questions about our grading practices and to get a better understanding if this is a path that students are feeling that they're getting more information on or not.
Yeah, that's.
I don't think we've gotten the answer in science if the grading, the grading in the sciences has been effective or not. Like, I don't think as a board member, I've gotten that, that information.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying, which is our research, whether it's researching what we've already done or what we might be able to do going forward or what other schools do, I think researching it and, you know, again, we can say grading practices, not SPG, such that we will understand over the next year exactly what we should be doing and we can make a decision, you know, for the following year. I think that's what we should be doing. It's not to say we should be doing SPG in, you know, in English or, you know, social studies. It's just to research and, and figure out what the best path forward is. Rhea?
I agree with Deanna. I, I, my son was part of the initial rollout as well. And there were definitely glitches. So I think to what, to Jill's point, maybe we do need some kind of longitudinal data to say, this is where we started, these are the courses the students tracked into, you know, some comparative data to, to prove that it actually, you know, maybe we'll be so surprised and say, oh, this is great. It brought kids to a higher level that we never knew they were doing. So basically prove that this one, this practice in science has been successful. And then I think consider researching it for other subjects.
Mm-hmm. Others? Trina?
Yeah, I think all of the things you mentioned, Jill, would be helpful. I think a couple of other things, I would love to know, like from a student perspective, what their perceptions are. Particularly if you take like an eighth grade student who is moving into the high school, how does that track with grading from eighth going into ninth? And, you know, what is a long-term plan for grading for those kids, whether it be in science or any other level? And then I assume, is this, this is the same as saying like the exemplars that they use in, say, language arts for the writing and math? It's the same concept, I think, just it's more specific to just writing?
It's more specific to the standard that they're getting evaluated on versus the rubric that they may be getting evaluated on for one essay that they're completing.
Right, so that in a way is sort of an element, like a very basic stage of the SPG? Or that's what I'm trying to figure out is that, are those early stages of being able to look at how we apply that concept in other subject areas like math and LA?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Others? Maria?
I, I think I would also like to see it sort of disaggregated by gender. Because what I remember, there were, there were standards that my daughters might have done well with, being very articulate. There were some habits of mind type standards built into the curriculum. So I, I just think that would be important to look at, you know, analytical data by all kinds of categories, including gender.
Yeah?
Yeah, so I guess, I guess what I'm hearing and what I would suggest is moving it back into the science, but getting very granular on what will be provided by the end of the year on that kind of data. And that way, you know, if, if it's wonderful, then we can move into a more, you know, broad-based research. But I wouldn't want to, I kind of feel like we're putting the cart before the horse right now because we still haven't gotten comfortable with where we are.
Can I just ask a question, which is, is there, is standards-based grading in, you know, across the country? Is it happening in lots of different subjects or is it?
It's happening even in some high schools.
Okay. Penny?
So my children were pre-standard-based grade, so I have no, I don't really have any knowledge of it other than what I've heard. But it just seems to me that it sounds like it might have been a little bit rocky, its initial rollout. And that that doesn't mean that we might not have gotten better. And maybe we need to do a survey or talk to some parents and are they happy now? And I don't necessarily want to limit it to just science. If there's a, if this is a trend in the top-performing districts across America and we want to be a premier district, then, you know, I, I think maybe we need to look a little bit. And this is just research. So I mean, it's, it's an allocation of our assets and our administrator and teacher time. So you have to be very careful with that, but I wouldn't want to discard it.
Sure.
I, I don't disagree. I mean, understanding best practices is always a good thing. But I just want to make sure that we're starting when looking at the colleges because the colleges have to read the transcript and then you rewind from there. So like, if colleges are not using SPG, the standards-based grading, I really would want to have, kind of take a step back and ask the question because if we're switching from SB, SPG in middle school, even in all topics, to a high school which is based on the traditional system that our colleges want to see and can interpret, then you're always going to have this very rocky road in middle school where parents don't understand that system. And I know now, I mean, it was rolled, piloted how many years ago? And I mean, I, I don't know why, Jill, I don't know why, but parents don't understand it. I mean, I can tell you as a very involved parent, I don't, it's harder for me to really be clear on how my student is doing in, in science than in other subject areas. So I can't tell you exactly why, but I can tell you that most of the parents I talk to tell me that they don't understand the standards-based grading and that they don't feel like they're getting, you know, the insight into that grading system that they are in other subjects. So I.
So what I, what I think I'm hearing is that goal that really, an indicator that was looking to report out on the efficacy of our current practices. And maybe what we want to do is grounded in the context of the greater research. Because I do think that sort of understanding what's happening in the field around the standards-based grading is important. And there is, there is movement that way. The, you mentioned the colleges and there's, there are some states that are requiring, there's all their high schools to move that way. Up north and northern New England, some, you know, Vermont, New Hampshire, others that are requiring all schools to move to standard-based grading. The, the idea of, the purpose of grades, they're feedback mechanisms, right? So I think what we need to do is think about, how do we look at what we're doing and kind of report out on the success in which the grades are providing actionable feedback for students, for teachers, and ultimately for parents and helping their students to continue to grow. So we can sort of, we'll think about how best to receive feedback around that. If it's not working, you know, if it's confusing people and they're not getting feedback that is, that's helpful for them, then it's, it's never going to be successful, right? Because we have, that, that is the purpose of grades, especially at the middle school, to provide feedback that can be helpful as people learn to learn and learn to grow. So we can put that together.
I just think the reason why you're getting some strong reactions is that we had a conversation a while ago and we gave some feedback. And I don't think that those questions or that conversation was ever responded to, but then we see a goal to look at expanding it.
Sure.
I'm just, you know.
That makes perfect sense. And the, but there has been quite a bit of work since that meeting by Melinda and the science department and folks around really being purposeful in the communications developed, working across the, the teachers and departments to make sure that at open houses, other opportunities, that the communication was very similar across the grade in the department by those folks. They've had other opportunities for parents to learn.
The communication has been good. I, I still think it's, for whatever reason, it's hard for, you know, parents, including some that I know well, to, to actually, you know, just understand it. Because they're, you know, no one's grown up with it, right? Everybody's grown up with the traditional grading system.
Well, and because we, we put it in one discipline and not the others, then your parents have to kind of, you're always comparing one against the other.
Right.
Because I'm going to get, get a report card that has A, B, C, D, F, and then has all these standards and I'm getting it at the same time. And so I know what a B is, I don't know what all of these ones, twos, threes, and fours are. And so you're always setting up that comparison year after year after year. So I think that that is certainly a, an important piece of feedback for how this has been implemented, you know, from the beginning. And I think that really speaks to the, the drive and the need for us to have this ongoing conversation and to continue to try to refine our practices one way or the other. I will share, I imagine that teachers and Melinda and others that are doing it would share that the, the fact that they're reporting out on a standards-based type, I don't know, means, means that they're much more aware of the standards. And as we've moved to the next generation science standards, that's been very important because they are fundamentally different than what was there before. So, you know, I do think that one of the, the outcomes of standards-based grading is that it does align the, more closely, it makes the teachers probably more acutely aware of the standards in their discipline and sort of developing, you know, units and work and assessments and others that are probably more tightly aligned to, to those standards. Pros and cons across the board. But we can, we'll study our current practices. And I think any sort of study and report on that would have, at least contextually, kind of bigger picture.
That would be helpful.
And probably what we, it's one of the areas that we didn't do a presentation on this year. So we had skipped, we had skipped the science presentation this year and we had put in other presentations. So now I'm thinking about all the behind-the-scenes stuff that I've been working with Melinda on, on the communication, realizing that we haven't come back to the board to do a formal presentation on it all. So certainly I'm, I'm thinking that we can certainly look at some longitudinal data. We can certainly do more parent, we have done survey of students. When Melinda came last time, she did have survey results. It's cumbersome, so we probably have to figure out a better way to mainstream that and give you better information. Perhaps maybe it's even something that Hanover would be able to assist us with.
You haven't surveyed parents, you haven't surveyed parents in.
No, we did students. We surveyed the students and got their perspective, but we haven't surveyed parents, so. Okay. We can put it back into science and we can continue to do the research. And then I've jotted down some ways that we can kind of present out to the board. So we can certainly get another draft of that objective to you before the next board meeting.
Yeah. I just, personally, I wouldn't like to see anyone think that we're expanding this program. And that's how I read it when I read it, is that we're expanding something we're not even sure we're comfortable with as a board. So I just want to make that clear.
That was never the intent?
No, I know, just the way it came off.
But the way it reads, then we want to fix it. Absolutely.
Yeah. And then I'd also, and maybe in what you're doing, because, so my son was one of the introductory students and as well in middle school. He's now a sophomore in college. So it's been at least six years. And so, you know, that's a very long window for us to still be at a place that. And so, you know, that's a very long window for us to still be at a place that people are not comfortable, and I just, I don't know what a reasonable period of time is. I don't know. But six years is a very long time to be where we are.
Well, I think, I think part of the, I agree with that. I think one of the, one of the questions, and the reason I want to do the research, is I think we need to make a decision. Do we, is it something that we want to do, or is it something that we don't want to do? But it's hard to have, you know, all these, you know, regular letter grades and then standard-based grading in one subject, and you're trying to figure out exactly what they all mean. I mean, I, like, I think there are probably some great things about standard, standards-based grading, but you need to actually understand what they all mean, you know? And so, I think we just need to study them, do it for a year, you know, figure out what we've done, what's worked, what hasn't, and, you know, which way we head from there. Okay. All right. Thanks. Okay, next is the, oh, sorry.
Any other questions?
I, two, two comments. One, I was wondering if somewhere in Goal One, we wanted to add something that talked about the need to make students sort of resilient. When you read the statistics about the number of jobs these students are going to have through their careers, and how many times they're going to be putting themselves out there and kind of moving on, I just don't know. And I know we have it a little bit further, and I think it's in the RTI or a different section, but just, I, I was looking at maybe even Objective Two. It says, "All students will meet New Canaan High School graduation standards, which include the knowledge and skills, you could say, emotional awareness and resilience needed to succeed in a complex global society."
I think it's in, I mean, I view this as really in EI, which is in Goal Four. I mean, we could add it to graduation.
Right, it might be a better, it might go better there, it just doesn't actually use those words or state sort of what our goals are. We're, and I think, to me, it's a little bit more than health. I mean, maybe the emotional is, but the...
So you're thinking the, under Goal One, Objective Two, where it says, "All students will meet NCHS graduation standards, which include the knowledge and skills needed to succeed in a complex global society." You're thinking you, which include the knowledge and skills.
Skills and resilience, I guess. I was thinking skills and resilience or something, but I, you know, if other people don't agree, it just occurred to me that we're, we're really talking.
I actually support that, yeah, I support that, and I think it belongs there versus Goal Four, because Goal Four is really more about your community and, like, supporting each other in a positive community versus, I think what you're talking about is just, I think we know in today's world, it's, it's more than just, you know, academic knowledge, and it's, it's really the fortitude and the resilience and the persistence and all, you know.
Right, and, you know, the self-confidence.
I guess the question is, do you view that as a skill or something different?
Well, to me, it was slightly different than a skill, right?
This is all part of the conversation with the vision of a graduate. It's fascinating, because that committee has, one of the words that they've chosen is resilient, and they're going through it and having conversations about it, and that's why we want to bring it out to the board and community members. So, how would you define that? How would you measure that? What would that look like over time? And that's really, it's interesting that you picked Objective Number Two, because that's right where that vision of a graduate is sitting, and it is one of the words that we've been talking about.
I mean, maybe it's as simple as, like, under two A, where it says, "Defining skills and dispositions," and then in parentheses, put "example resilience." Because it, Jill's right, it says it right there. I mean, that's, the skills and, the word "dispositions" is...
Dispositions is pretty darn close.
Yeah. It does capture that.
So I would, for what it's worth, I mean, we certainly could, but the, the work around the vision of the graduate, you might want to let it emerge through that work. I know that it has on the staff side, but, you know, as the board gets together and community gets together, if you have it emerge as one of the dispositions that, you know, is that piece of the vision of the graduate, it might, unless the board is ready tonight to commit to that being a part of the vision of the graduate.
I think it would be good to let them come to us.
It's, it's actually really good and interesting work, that, as Jill mentioned, sort of figuring out, what does it look like? How do you measure it? How do you teach it? How do you assess it as you're going through? What is, you know, we know what we mean, but how do you see it in another person? How do you give them opportunities to demonstrate resilience, resiliency in an...
Academic setting, for instance, you know, it's really...
I'm happy to, I, I think it's this work the district is already doing, and it's not going to, whether or not we change the language here or not, it, we're just sort of telling people what we're doing. So if it's not, if you look at this and you don't think it's appropriate at this point to add that word someplace, I wasn't sure where, I'm happy to wait until, you know, we develop that vision. But I just wanted to think at some point, we should, if that's something that we're trying to do in the district, I think we should state it in our goal.
I mean, I, yeah, go ahead, Maria.
Well, I'm just reading that it does say, "Part of the process is to develop the vision of the graduate by identifying the skills." So, like you were saying, if it comes out of the, we have an ident, that's sort of jumping ahead, maybe.
Yeah, if we don't want to jump the gun, that's fine.
Sure.
It'll emerge.
It'll emerge.
And be discussed and owned by the group and more broadly after.
Okay. You were just ahead of your time there.
Exactly. Or thinking what I didn't do for my own children, whatever. Okay, so I had a comment on D, two D, which is talking about where we're evaluating the school start time. And so it's not to sort of confuse people about what our timeline is, because it's my understanding that this is work that we'll be doing in the, over the summer and in the fall, so that if we want to, if it has budgetary implications, we'll be able to put it into the budget. So I'm just wondering if we want to say, at the beginning of Option D, over the summer and the fall, evaluate the school start time option. I don't, because we're not, I don't want somebody to read this and think, "Oh, my gosh, they're going to study it for another year, and then if they implement something, it's not going to be till 21, 22."
Yeah.
But part of the evaluation is the budgetary part of it, so I think you're underselling how long it's going to take if, if there's, if it's part of the budget process, and that's, goes all the way through December.
Well, we're gonna, I guess, the goal was that we would know enough about the option to know whether or not we wanted to include it in the budget that we present, and that's one that's typically presented, you know, discussed a little bit in December and presented by the superintendent to the board at that first meeting in January. So, I mean, we can continue to talk about it, I wouldn't want to foreclose talking about this after January.
Right, because we're going to have to vote on, I mean, that's, because it has budgetary, because it has budgetary implications, there's going to be no decision until we vote on the budget.
Right, but...
Right, right, but I want to make sure that we have...
We're going to provide guidance for the development of the budget, which happens in the winter.
Right, that's why I don't think you should be so specific. I would be less specific there, just because it's going to be through the budget, and it, I, I think it's fine.
And what we're doing, what we're doing during this upcoming school year, and we could clarify it maybe by saying, "evaluate for possible implementation in the following school year, school start time option, blah, blah, blah."
I actually, that's, I was, I think we need to leave ourselves the room to develop an implementation plan for whatever is approved. The assumption is that, you know, whatever it is that we approve, whether it be scheduling changes or school start times, that I think we were hoping to implement 2021. So, seems appropriate to be, include some mention of that in the goal.
Right. Do you understand?
Yeah, I like that, for possible, I like the idea about, for possible implementation. I think that's a much better way to...
Because that's what we're doing in the 1920 school year.
Yeah, I think that's a much better way to go at it.
Okay, makes sense?
You could just add it to the end of D or something.
I think everything you said about the schedule is the same, right? But in terms of when we're going to be making decisions, but during the 1920 school year, we're going to be evaluating for possible implementation in the following school year, the start time change.
Yep.
That's all. Yeah. That was it. I don't have any other comments. Well done.
These comments are great. This is a living document, we tell everyone it's a living document, this is the point. This is something that we talk about, we think about, and it drives our action, so we like this conversation.
Good conversation.
This is minor, but just in looking at Goal Two a little bit more, I'm wondering if the order of A, B, C, D, just seems like A and C sort of are aligned together, and B and D are more focused on the school start time and wellness options, so.
Oh, sure.
Minor, yeah.
Yeah.
Just for the scheduling options and the school starting end time.
Together.
Makes sense.
He was, right here, on Goal Two, not others.
I admit.
I was going to go to...
Yeah, I did the same thing.
Yeah, Objective Two.
Objective Two, okay.
Got it.
Okay. Goal Two?
Sure. So, Goal Two is our communication goal. And our update here, as we, we're continuing to implement our communication plan, we are, we actually rolled out a new skin to our website. If you haven't seen it, it certainly looks excellent, looks updated, and sort of just gives it a, a more modern look, more inviting for folks to take a look as they go into the website itself. So, if you haven't gone to our homepage recently, go to, go to homepage, the homepage and take a look. But the, our simple change here is the professional learning for Board of Ed members of the ministry's community related to student health and wellness. You know, that's driving so much work that we're, what we're doing with the schedule, what we're looking at, school start and end times, other things. We figured, let's kind of keep that focus alive and be aligned in what do we mean by student health and wellness, what are best practices, what are other pieces? So, that little, that small change, just to be more specific there. We will continue our advocacy for the needs of New Canaan students and, and others. The, as a matter of fact, that just paid off, I think, today a little bit, in that, with a group of superintendents and the really very active group up in Ellington, the governor today signed legislation that permits school districts to select their graduation date anytime they want throughout the course of the year, as long as it's at or past the 180th day. So you no longer have to wait till April 1 to pick your graduation date, you can actually do it in advance, right at the beginning of the school year, and pick the date, and if you have snow days or whatever, those seniors can still end on that day. So that was some more advocacy on the superintendent's part across the state and other folks, to sort of pull that off. So we keep, keep doing so.
Wait, that's awesome, so that means that you can set it basically on the Friday, last Friday?
We can set it on the date that works best for our community and our kids, as long as it's the 180th day or later.
For the original calendar.
And, no, for our, our calendar, there's no more regional calendar.
No, no, I said for our original calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
For our original calendar.
Yes. So we can look at the, the calendar that's been approved by the board, we can pick what day is the 180th day, we can select that day for graduation and stick with it. It's a very big deal.
Because it's very hard, I mean, as we just experienced, having graduation on Tuesday night and then getting moved to Wednesday is very difficult for families that have, you know, out-of-town family who have to travel in, I mean, that's a big deal.
Yeah. So this fall, when we come back, we'll, we'll pull the calendar out, and we'll, we'll pick our date. Yeah. It's good stuff.
But you have to leave one extra day for rain.
No, well, I know, but it's just having...
Well, we still do 182 days.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
Having graduation on a Tuesday night is very difficult for out-of-town families.
You could make it Thursday, and then have Friday as a backup, right?
Well, again, you want to look at the 180th day in the calendar.
Right.
Because...
Right, no, I, yeah, no, I'm still saying it's a big deal.
Yeah, and see where that falls, and people can plan well in advance. I know it's challenging for families sometimes when people are traveling in and trying to make all that work.
The team did a good job this year dodging the raindrops.
We did get a few raindrops, yeah.
We snuck it in, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, so, but that's a result of advocacy. So we're, we'll keep doing that work, certainly, and we'll keep...
So he's reminding us that he accomplished a goal in the advocacy.
No, 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 I don't take credit, no, really, again, it was the group up in Ellington, they, they worked with a Chamber of Commerce and others, who said, "Look, we, we need our seniors, we need the folks who are graduating, who are old enough to work, to be able to get started and working our communities, and pushing off graduation doesn't allow that to happen in a timely way." So there was some really, some very good, good work done around that, and I congratulate them. Yeah. So those are communication goals. Our Goal Three, we call it our TEPEL goal, we continue to do our work around our TEPEL program, continue doing our calibration with our administrators, with our teachers, with others. And we, we talk a lot about TEPEL, but there's also the LETLE, which is the administrative program, there's also a different continuum of practice for each of our service providers, you know, each specialty. So our school counselors, our psychologists, our social workers, others, all have a, a different continuum that they use for their evaluation. So it really is purposefully tailored to the work that our folks are doing every day with our kids. I can pause briefly before going into Goal Four, which has more changes. Okay. That's four seconds of wait time. And Goal Four is to promote an environment that fosters respect, ethical behavior, and responsible global citizenship. And as you'll likely recall, a few years ago, we moved our school safety goals or objectives into Goal Four as well. It wasn't Goal Five, and we felt that it's so interconnected between school climate and, and school safety, so we continue to do that. To review, revise, and implement school and district climate plans system-wide, continue to develop our work around emotional intelligence in grades K-8, to develop and begin the implementation of EI in grade nine through 12, the, to revise the ninth-grade health curriculum and nine through 12 connections lessons to include these EI skills, that's what we're thinking as far as sort of program delivery, for the most part there. Professional learning opportunities for all of our folks around student wellness, interventions, reporting protocols, you see that there? Using the school climate data, develop goals for student-led groups for 2019, 20. And as you'll probably recall, years ago, with Bill Preble, he had come to the board a couple of times, we read the book, "The Respectful School," and Sacks really grabbed that and ran with it, as far as having students look through the school climate data, develop action research projects, and to go through and implement those projects. Susan Bliss has shared that with us a number of times and what have you. So that, we don't necessarily talk about that all the time, but that kind of work still continues. There's still groups of students that are engaged in looking at the data and developing plans, and to working actively to try to make their school a better place, which is, you know, a wonderful opportunity for them, for that civic engagement and ownership over their school and their environment and what have you. The parent education on EI opportunity, and EI at all of our levels, as you will recall, Dr. Bliss does visit every school at a PFA or PTC meeting, shared with them what was happening, spoke about it a bit. She also does that at the beginning of the school year. I try to mention it a couple of times as I go around, but providing a variety of different opportunities for folks to learn about what we're doing. And then in Number Two, which is our safety and security, the only change there is with Alice, you'll remember the presentation that we had regarding Alice in the fall, we're, we have a few, a couple of folks that are going out to training this summer, and we're continuing to look at the protocol, to adjust it for each of the three different levels. It looks a little bit different in the elementary than it does in the middle, than it does in the high school, but really to implement that district-wide. And we've even developed a video that our new staff are going to watch, is there, as part of their onboarding, so they understand that protocol, how it works. And we're going to have all staff watching to the start of the school year through CAB. With Joanne Rocco retiring from CAB, we had to have a new co-facilitator over there, so Steve Bedard is going to continue doing that work, and Chris DeCarrea here at the high school, our high school assistant principal. So they're going to be the co-leaders of our crisis advisory board group, and they're both very invested in that work. They've both been Alice-trained as well, and have been sort of growing into the role over the last couple of years. So they'll continue to do that. But we are committed to continuing to send folks, and we, we don't just send teachers, we sent our campus monitors go, we had the SROs go, Leon Krokowski went last summer. There, we, we try to be broad in the representation and knowledge around Alice, because if, if a crisis occurs, it's, everybody's involved in working through it. So we want to do all we can to educate folks. I will pause.
Long enough.
Okay. You tried to count to four. At least it used to be. Goal Five is our stewardship goal. Not an awful lot of changes here. I mean, we're going to review the enrollment projections and plans, and we, you know, we keep on constant eye on where we are as far as our number of sections and what's available in our building. We're okay on that score. Certainly bumping up into it a little bit, but we've got, we have room to grow just a little bit. We are adding a fourth pre-K section this year, and that is, we have room for that over at West because of the, the enrollment is a little bit lower than it was, say, five years ago. So, we're able to pick up that extra space. And that position is generally funded from the tuition that comes through the program, for the most part. So, we're doing that. But we'll look at our enrollment projections, facility plans, report on the status of the long and short-term needs of the school facilities. The last time we had the conversation, Penny, I think you had mentioned something about adding in solar into 4B, when we were talking about efficiencies, offsets, and things. And we're going to talk about the PPA in a minute or two.
We're really adding solar.
We are, literally.
Exciting.
Yep. And since then, I mean, the natural gas has come online, you know, the building management systems we've been talking about. So, really, a great, great deal of work continues to be done in all of these areas. And as we've said before, you know, that the more we can figure out ways to control those annual costs, the more opportunity it gives us to, you know, continue investing in our schools and our kids. So, we continue to look for ways to bend the curves on things like our energy costs, our, our heating costs, other things like that, which is beneficial to, then we can pass those savings on to the town.
Doing a really good job there. Deanna?
So, I, I thought I remember Dan and maybe Joanne saying at their last presentation that we were going to have a facility survey this year. So, can we add that as, you know, because that's a big deal?
Yeah.
Like specifically in the goals this year to have, because I, I've been asking for a few years, and I, I think it's great that we're finally going to have it. It's been about five years, and so if we could put it in this year, and we'll take it out next year, but I'd like to make sure that it gets done.
Sure. And that facility survey does drive our long-range capital request and needs, so absolutely we can sort of-
What is this?
Perform and share. And then we'll develop a revised, you know, long-range capital plan that will, you know, we'll, I think we're pretty close on a lot of what's already there, but this will help us to refine that a little bit and maybe identify some things that we don't know anything, we don't know yet.
So, under three, where it says, "Review the facility survey," should we just say, "Prepare and review"?
Yeah.
Is this a new-
Yeah, because it's brand new.
Okay. So, just say, "Prepare and review."
Sure.
If I may, it's more of a revision than a preparation of a new document.
So, they're not, but you are going to have the, are you bringing in the consultants, and they're going to do a more of a deep dive into the buildings? I mean, the last time it was a big, it was a big undertaking, so I was hoping it was going to be another-
So, it's more targeted to revising the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing areas. We've taken care of a lot of the carpentry and the facilities, the roofing, and all those types of studies have already been done and completed, and there's no need to redo them.
Okay.
So, we're really going to take the document that we had and revise it and update it.
So, let's say, "Revise and review."
Yeah. It's not a, it's not a new study.
Update.
Update and review.
So, how long do you think, just, this is backing up now, because that's not what I thought we were doing. So, how, will we, is it after we've done this one, it'll always be done in piecemeals from here on out? Or will we ever need that, like, deep dive again to be able to have a really strong five-year capital plan that's, that's very precise? Because obviously, those numbers are five years old now, and, you know, while we can make the best estimates, it, it was a very helpful thing that was implemented, and I would just, I wouldn't want that rigor to be lost if-
Right. I think that what we really are going to be doing for you is giving you a progress report on all the items that were in that report by school, because it was very, very detailed. And it probably took them months to put that kind of data together.
Right.
And the data doesn't change.
But don't you have, don't they identify new projects by going through that? So, like, I, I understand that they're going to update what they've seen, but that original would identify additional problems potentially. And that's what I'm more concerned about, is that there may be things that, because it's not something we're looking at all the time, that there could be something that a, a structural engineer or whoever you brought in to do that work five years ago identified something that maybe, or am I wrong in that assumption, that it was, they are, they only identified things we already knew about?
So, the things that are, that do change and, you know, wear out over time are the mechanicals inside the building. That's why we're focused in on those areas. The roofs are the roofs. We know we have to replace them. The windows are the windows. We know we have to replace them. We're redoing all the repointing on the exterior of the buildings. So, all of those projects are really scheduled right now through our capital plan. The MEP, the things that do change, I mean, we haven't added any boilers, but they've gotten older, so that their conditions are different. And there's new technology. They're going to recommend different types of replacements. So, I think we're focused on the right area.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, great. So, I think we need a motion on that. Deanna?
I move to approve the first read of the district goals as amended. Can we say that?
Sure.
Okay.
It's a first read.
Yeah.
Second? Sherry? Okay.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the 2020 Board of Ed meeting schedule. So, I don't think we need to go through every meeting.
No. I do have-
We can take this away.
It's a first reading, and we do this in two readings. The, I do have a suggestion for the board, if you're, just to consider. The, in July and in August, now this is 2020, we have two dates. We have the 13th there and the 10th there. It's much easier to remove dates than it is to add them, because when you add them, it becomes a special meeting. So, it might be advantageous to add a July 20th and an August 17th date, with the understanding that, you know, we're, the board generally would not meet four times over the course of the summer, but it would give more flexibility for people's vacation schedules, which we can then check prior to having those, so.
Okay.
And the other, the other piece that's a little bit different, so we can add the July 20th and the August 17th, between now and the next board meeting. In May, you'll see there are three meetings. That third meeting is purposeful for the evaluation, for superintendent's evaluation, because I know it can be hard to schedule for folks and hard to arrange calendars, and as the spring comes, people get busier. So, it was a recommendation or suggestion from a board member that I thought was a good one to just formally put it right on there. And since it's not a special meeting, again, you have the flexibility of the agenda as we go through, and it's easier to cancel than to add.
Okay. Sounds good. Could I have a motion? Unless there are any questions? Penny, second. Sherry? Thank you. Okay. Next is the solar power purchase agreement.
Dr. Fu? So, this is, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. So, on Friday, we had sent out in the board's packet the revised PPA that we've been working on with Davis Hill. As you recall, Matt Ranali was at our last meeting in June. He gave you a lot of information about the PPA, so we're not going to get into all of those details. What I thought I'd do is remind you of what the PPA is. It's a 20-year agreement that we're going to have with Davis Hill Development, and it's for solar votaic panels. And we have a rate that's very competitive. It's about 73% less than our current rate that we pay per kilowatt hour. The panel system is going to cover about 80% of our demand requirement, so we'll still be going out to the grid for about 20% of what we need. We're going to do it on a net metering basis, so when we have a lot of sun coming down, we're going to be pushing out to the grid, and we'll be able to pull back as much as we send out at the rate that we send, zero rate, basically. So, that's what the system is going to cover. We had a few questions when we left the last meeting that I think we've resolved favorably for the board. The non-appropriation clause has been rewritten. We had a lot of back and forth with that. Davis Hill has to have certain language in there so that their lenders feel confident that it's a viable contract for 20 years. On the other hand, we have to have a non-appropriation clause, because that's the law in the state of Connecticut. So, I think we did strike a good balance there. One of the clauses that was omitted was the reimbursement to the host, which is us, we're the host, of the consulting services, and it was outlined in the RFP to reimburse us. And so, that's worth about $12,500. They're going to be giving us a check once we sign this agreement. And then we got the parent guarantee, which I thought was a great suggestion, Deanna, and you had made that suggestion. And it really has Skyview Ventures, who is the parent company of Davis Hill, guaranteeing the construction of the project, which is the main thing. We want to make sure they have the funding to do that in the first year of operations. So, it reads pretty much exactly what we wanted in there. Once we have the agreement signed, we're going to have to add the critical milestones. We don't have those ironed out right now. We've gone about three weeks beyond when, what our ideal start time was. So, that's something that we're going to work on tomorrow and just kind of nail down those dates so that we can put that in the contract. There's some typos, some little language that needs to be modified, but it doesn't change the intent of the agreement. And so, we're looking forward to moving forward with the project. There are a few things that I do want you to be aware of. When we went out to RFP on this job, we advertised it as a non prevailing wage job, because Davis Hill is not a public entity. We are. We're subject to the prevailing wage laws, but they aren't. If somebody were to contest that, we would have to reopen and negotiate the impact of that. The magnitude over, the gross magnitude of that is in the $30,000 to $40,000 range, and that we would be looking at spreading that over 20 years. So, the impact I can see is going to be significant. We also went out to bid as a tax exempt entity, which we are, and we always have been. They wanted language to protect them in case the federal government decides to change that 10 years from now, which I can't imagine they do that, because governments don't charge other governments taxes, but you never know.
I think that makes us a private school.
So, they just wanted to be covered for that. And then the switchgear, which we own, and that's the interconnectivity, we had it examined. It's, it appears to be totally appropriate to take the new meters into it, but if we find that we have to do some extra upgrades for that purpose, then we will be adding some cost. In talking with Matt, those are the exposures we might have moving forward. Other than that, I think we have a good agreement to sign.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay. This is outstanding. I'm very happy that we're moving forward with it. 73% reduction is a great outcome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So, we need a motion to approve the power purchase agreement between New Canaan Public Schools and Davis Hill Development for South Emma Elementary School, and authorize the superintendent to execute the contract. Penny? Second. Katrina? All right. All those in favor? Genius, thank you. Okay. Next is the SACS addition and alteration project. Penny?
All right.
It's all yours. And as Penny-
It's short.
As Penny goes to the podium, I did email the presentation out to board members, so if you'd like to pull it up on your tablet or laptop, you're certainly welcome to do that.
So, I'm happy to be standing here for the last time to tell you about this project. We are basically complete now, and just to remind you who the building committee was. And basically, this project had three parts. Essentially, we were building a two-story classroom addition that was going to permit us to properly resize classrooms throughout SACS. We renovated the auditorium, which was 58 years old when we started the project, about 60 years old when we finally renovated it. We right-sized the overcrowded music rooms. We added key storage for the auditorium and the music instruments. We abated for PCBs, the auditorium, the ceramics room, and the boiler room in places. And we modified the kitchen servery to improve the workflow and student service and to meet codes. So, that was the project. I'm happy to say that you all probably remember this, the, we finished it on time and under budget. We opened the classroom addition in the fall for the 2017-18 school year. The auditorium and the new music rooms were open that fall as well. I think the auditorium was in use at the beginning of the year and full use by November. All the ceramics, auditorium, and boiler room were abated. So, this year, while we weren't standing in front of you last fall, we took, we wanted to methodically go through. So, we had our construction manager, ONG, close out all the construction contracts. We filed a monitoring and maintenance plan with the EPA that the district worked on and is very familiar with, and is actually already implemented in part. We commissioned the building systems over the years as we went through the various different seasons, so that we were good with that. And on June 27th, the SACS building committee met for the last time and accepted the project as complete. So, there are some school district post-project activities. There's going to be follow-up with the EPA to finalize the monitoring and maintenance plan, if they have any comments on it, and to finalize the language for the deed restriction that relates to the encapsulated PCBs in the building that's going to be filed on the land records. So, the project cost, if you remember, it was, we estimated originally, it was $18.6 million project. The final cost came in at, this is 99% reconciled, we just have one little, little bit that we have to finish. Okay. Project cost was $18,050,000. The state reimbursement has $2,270,000 that's been paid, and we estimate that we'll get maybe an additional $300,000 once the project is closed. So, the net cost to the town is approximately $15,050,000, which is more reimbursement than we thought we would originally get. So, that was excellent. So, kudos to Joanne and her team for getting that done so efficiently. So, tonight, because it's a state requirement, we would like the Board of Ed to vote to accept the SACS building project as complete.
Any questions or thank yous to Penny? Sherry?
I just, I suggest that we add to, like, our budget, next budget cost efficiencies, not having to hire, like, a full-time project manager for the SACS renovation, and to thank you, Penny, for all that you've done to lead this project.
Well, it was a great project. I really enjoyed it. And the nice thing is that our last meeting, and Joanne was there, is the, the whole building committee really feels very good and positive about the project. And going through SACS, you get stopped by teachers who talk about, they'll say, "I used to be in this hallway, and now I'm in a regular classroom."